I'd like to call the Monday, October 28th, 2019 meeting of the Blue Springs Planning Commission to order. If I could ask everyone to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome, everyone, this evening, as well as those watching us at home. Tonight's agenda will consist of the consent agenda. I have a public hearing for a conditional use permit, then a planned residential overlay final plan for Eagles Ridge, as well as the final plat for Eagles Ridge, I have a planned unit development final plan for Gardens at Chapman Farms, as well as the final plat, then other business and adjournment. So with that, I would entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
A motion from Commissioner.
I'll second.
And I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Before I get into the public hearing, I'll just run through the procedure real quick, in case there's someone unfamiliar. I will open the public hearing. I will call for exhibits from our city attorney. Staff will make comments. The applicant will be given the opportunity to make their presentation. Then I will ask for witnesses in favor, witnesses opposed. I'll have a general discussion among the commissioners, then I'll close the public hearing, and we'll consider it for a vote. So with that, I'm going to open the public hearing for conditional use permit, CUP-10-19-7102, for Klein Van. I will call for the exhibits.
Chairman, I offer the following exhibits into the record. Exhibit 1, staff report with attachments. 2, application with attachments. 3, affidavit of publication in the examiner on October 12, 2019. 4, 185-foot notification map. 5, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. 6, copy of the letter sent to said property owners. 7, Title IV Land Use Section Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference. And 8, 2014 comprehensive plan by reference.
All right. Thank you very much. And Mr. Jury is going to make the staff presentation for us this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Graham and Planning Commissioners. Before you today is a request from Brent Klein with Klein Vans to approve a conditional use permit for the primary use of a general manufacturing with accessory uses that include an outdoor storage of the manufactured vans that he's doing at that location. So this property is located at 321 Southeast AA Highway. It's in, which is generally located at the northeast corner of AA and Grace Circle, in between Grace Circle and Sunnyside School Road. And it's light industrial, LI zoning currently. And here's an aerial photo of the existing building. The applicant is not requesting to do any additions to the building. They're going to use what's existing within it, and they are currently there. So I will get into a little bit of the purposes behind this conditional use, because it is a little bit different in terms of the proposed use than other conditional uses that we normally In general, I'll start with describing the use a little bit. So Van do it, Klein Vans doing businesses, Van do it. They take in vans and similar vehicles and outfit the interior. They manufacture the interior of each van and, in essence, make, turn a van into like a camper van or similar. And so they manufacture what, all the interior parts of that van, and then when they finish, they come out with a finished product, and it's a van that they then either deliver to their client or sell, and also potentially rent to people that might want a camper van or similes. So, in essence, this is a general manufacturing use, which is allowed by right in the LI Light Industrial Zoning District. However, the outdoor storage of finished or unfinished product is not allowed in light industrial zoning, but it is allowed by conditional use permit for like outdoor sales and service of equipment and vehicle rental establishments. So while this is a use allowed by right, the outdoor storage is strictly prohibited unless approved by conditional use. So since this doesn't fit neatly in any one category, staff decided that bringing this through a conditional use process was the best mechanism to approve that outdoor storage, since it was similar in look and feel as some of the other conditional uses, like vehicle sales or vehicle rental. So in essence, this request is to allow the outdoor storage of what would otherwise not be allowed for this specific use, even though the use is allowed by right. So if that makes sense, I'll sort of move forward in the conditional use standards for some of that outdoor storage and talk about how the outdoor storage itself will be sort of mitigated from adjacent properties, as the use standards for some similar uses would be. So in this instance, the Light Industrial Zoning District has a performance standard saying that no outdoor storage of merchandise materials, supplies, equipment shall be allowed in the LI district unless completely screened from view of rights way and more restrictive zoning districts. The applicant is proposing to actually fence in a little bit of the area, and I'll pull up a map of this. Here's a map that, or a plan for the fencing proposal. So they're planning, and the applicant is planning to fence along AA Highway, along the frontage of AA and around to the front of the building as well, with a six-foot-tall black wrought iron or similar fence along that road, and also a six-foot chain link fence along Sunnyside and the backside of the building. So there's two different materials. There is a little bit of topography in the southeast corner of the site, and down in this area, you can sort of see a shadow for how much lower that parking lot sits. So staff believes with the fence, the existing landscaping and the topography, the storage area will be screened from view appropriately from the right-of-way, as requested by code. As well, there is also quite a bit of landscaping, existing vegetation along Sunnyside School Road, and it's also quite a steep drop-off as well, coming from the road down. So the vans will be down from the road and not as visible from that side as well. So staff does believe that this is an acceptable proposal if the storage area is not used to store any materials used in the manufacturing process, other than the vehicles or vans before and after that manufacturing process. So there'd only be vehicles outside in those storage areas. Staff recommends that the proposed screening is installed, since winter is coming on us right now, actually. The screening should be installed, that fence should be installed by March 31st of 2020, giving him a little bit of time to get that fence in, if weather does not permit here in the next few months. Just outlining where, I guess I should outline where the storage is compared to the customer and vehicle, or customer and employee parking. So there are 16 employee and customer spaces. This meets the code requirement for parking. And there's 16 in the southwest corner of the site, and then the remainder of the site is potentially used for outdoor storage of the vehicles, pre and post manufacturing. Altogether, the other use standards, just having adequately surfaced, parking lots, paved area is existing, so it does not meet the paved area setback, but there is quite a bit of frontage space between the edge of the highway, or AA and Sunnyside School Road, and the edge of the parking lot pavement. And in rough estimate from the applicant, they measured about 45 feet between the curb of AA and 20 feet from the, and 20 feet from Sunnyside School Road, by staff's measurement. The requirements on those two areas are 25 feet from the right-of-way. So in essence, the 45 along AA, there's 45 existing when 25 is required from the property line. And there's a little bit less distance between Sunnyside School Road and the paving on the east property line of the parking lot, but staff does believe that with the existing vegetation and the steep topography on that side, that it's acceptable and meets the intent of this requirement, a paving setback requirement. The property in general meets all other use standards that are applicable to similar uses. The existing landscaping, there's quite a bit of existing landscaping on site. Here's an aerial photo, calling out all the tree diameters in the table down here, and based on existing tree calcul, or plant unit calculations, they are providing almost about three times as many trees as needed, based on existing tree calculations. And the parking, I did go over with the 16 parking spaces required, and they do meet that. So all in all, staff does recommend approval of the primary general manufacturing use with accessory uses, including accessory sales and rental of the manufactured vehicles, as well as the outdoor storage of the manufactured vehicles themselves, pre and post manufacturing. With the conditions of the fence being installed by March, and the existing topography and landscaping shall be maintained or replaced in the future with comparable screening, to make sure that the screening that's existing remains similar in intensity. So staff does recommend approval with the four conditions outlined in the report, and I'll stand for any questions.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Jury? All right. Doesn't look like it. Would the applicant like to come forward and make their presentation on these? Be sworn in, state your name and address for the record as well.
Okay.
He'll swear in first.
Do you sound like you're sworn in just to give this case to the truth, so we can... Yes, I do. Brent Klein, and 7789 Highway Y, Chillicothe, Missouri. Okay, so, you know, really, Nathan did a great job explaining everything, really. And, you know, the only thing I think that I really would add is, you know, we enjoy the city of Blue Springs. We have grown greatly since being here, and we hope to grow more. That, I think that's part of what the issue was, is that we just grew really fast. We went from three employees and a couple of part-time employees to, now we've up to 11, and then some part-time. So we've grown, and we want to maximize the space while we're there. We honestly think that we'll outgrow it at some point. We would love to stay in Blue Springs, but we really do love the area, and I guess I'm really just, again, I couldn't give you any more detail unless there are specific questions, but I'm certainly open to any questions that you may have.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Klein?
No.
All right. Doesn't look like it.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Is there anybody that would like to speak in favor? Anybody that, yes, sir. You'll need to be sworn in as well when you come up here and then state your name and address as well.
My name is...
You'll need to be sworn in first, please.
Do you sound like you're sworn in just to give this case to the truth, so we can...
I do.
My name is Terry Reed. I live 1911 Southwest Meyer Boulevard, Blue Springs, Missouri. And my wife, Janice, and I built and own the two buildings directly to the north of the building in question. And we've been there 10 years. And so we've watched a lot of companies come and go in that industrial park. And I'm just here to say I totally support what's happening right now, because finally, I used to lease that building, leased it to the Blue Springs Police Department. You guys may remember when the, when the Blue Springs Police Department needed a place to live, and so I was the landlord for quite some time back there. So that's an industrial park, and I believe in industry. I'm a mechanical engineer, and I believe in manufacturing, and I see nothing going on that offends me. I hope there's more of it in the future of Blue Springs.
That's it.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Reed? All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor? Anybody that would like to speak in opposition? All right. I'll bring it back up here. Any other questions, discussion on the record? All right. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Banks.
I'd like to vote your motion to approve the conditional use permit for Klein Van, CUP-10-19-7102, with the four conditions.
I have a motion from Commissioner Banks. I have a second from Commissioner Fairbanks. This will be a roll call vote.
Planning Commissioner Casey.
Aye.
Commissioner Banks.
Aye.
Commissioner Billups.
Aye.
Commissioner Peele.
Aye.
Commissioner Stokkenberry.
Aye.
Commissioner Hose.
Aye.
Commissioner Fairbanks.
Aye.
Chairman Graham.
Aye. All right. That motion carries and is approved, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next items on the agenda will be the planned residential overlay final plan for Eagles Ridge, as well as the final plat. We're going to hear both of those presentations together and then consider them separately. And Mr. Jury is going to present those two items as well.
Thank you, Chairman Graham and Planning Commission. Before you today, his request for a final plan and final plat approval for Eagles Ridge Estates' second plat. And I'll pull up the aerial map here. Here's the zoning, the aerial photo is here as well. The property is located about 200 feet east of the intersection of Southwest Third and Southwest Eagles Ridge Drive. This is just an extension of the existing subdivision Eagles Ridge, and the approved preliminary plat and PRO concept plan for this development as well. The property is about 20 acres, encompasses 32 watts, and it's zoned, does have a couple zoning districts on it, SF7, PRO, and MF14, down in the very southern tip, but the PRO concept plan does limit everything despite the zoning. It limits everything to the SF, or single-family, use across the proposed plat here. The request, staff does, has reviewed this, and the proposed final plat and the PRO final plan are in substantial compliance in terms of the lot layouts and general design of the plat and the plan. They're in substantial compliance with the approved preliminary plat and the PRO concept plan. I'll go over a few of the details in this presentation. The lot ranges for this second plat of Eagles Ridge Estates' PRO, the lot sizes range from 800, or 8,758 square feet to, up to 21,000, almost 22,000 square feet. And this is within, well within the PRO requirement of 7,200 square feet. The minimum lot widths, the minimum proposed is 73, when the minimum required is 65. The network and every, the network, sorry, the network on the street network and the pedestrian network matches the preliminary plat. The proposed landscaping meets code requirements, as you can see here. Their required number of trees and their required amenities as well match the proposed concept plan. There is trees in an assortment up here on tracks D and E. There's also a meandering trail going through tracks D and E, which will connect to a linear trail that goes north-south to the existing trails and proposed trails and adjacent phases of this development. The public improvements, they, most of them have been completed, but there are a few items that still need to be done, that haven't been completed per Public Works. Staff also does need a financial guarantee for the public sidewalk, trail, and landscaping and street trees in and adjacent to these tracks D and E, because none of, none of the trees landscaping, or street trees landscaping or a trail has been installed as of yet. So we will need a financial guarantee to cover all of those items, since there are no occupancy bill, or occupiable buildings on those tracks that we can hold up occupancy on. So we do need a financial guarantee to ensure that those are, the required improvements are completed. There is a condition that even if they do financially guarantee all the required improvements in this phase, that prior to the final phase of the estates, Eagles Ridge Estates', everything should be installed, landscaping, trail, all the amenities, prior to final plat approval of that last phase. And the final plan does have a few typographical errors that staff has in Condition 2C, that prior to building permit issuance, staff just wants some clerical errors to be cleaned up on this, this plan, that don't really impact the criteria of the, but just a clerical error, I guess, such as updating the title block and a few notes that referenced old, or referenced nothing or something. So such as the, some of these notes down here just need to be updated. The final plat, however, did meet all the requirements and is ready, besides the conditions for the public improvements and financial guarantee. I'll show you a plat as proposed. It's located here, and Steph, this does meet all the preliminary plat criteria, matches the proposed plan, so with the conditions, staff does recommend approval of the preliminary plat and the final plan with six conditions, and I'll stand for any questions.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Jury? Commissioner Fairbanks?
Thank you. I don't know if this is appropriate at this point or not, but has the swimming pool been installed?
Yes, it has.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Jury? All right. Would the applicant like to say anything? Do you just state your name and address when you come forward?
Robert Walquist.
Robert Walquist, Quist Engineering at 821 Columbus Lee Summit, Missouri. Yeah, the client has been trying, I think he got the streets in about a month ago. He's just trying to get with staff and get all the amenities for the villas Phase 1 and all that, finally approved, and then he can roll that money over into this phase, because he's got money in those. So he just, it's a process. But we appreciate you guys moving it forward, because it helps development quite a bit to move it this far, instead of waiting until the very, everything's totally approved and then moving on. So we appreciate staff's help on that, so.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Walquist? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. I would entertain a motion in regard to the final plan, if someone wanted to go right in.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Banks.
I would like to make a motion to approve the final plan, overlay final plan for Eagles
With?
The six conditions.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Banks, a second from Commissioner Billups. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, and then...
Mr. Chair.
You want to keep going on the final plat?
Yes.
All righty.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the final plat for Eagles Ridge, PF-09-19-7057, with the six staff conditions.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Banks, second from Commissioner Billups. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That motion carries, and that recommendation will be sent to City Council on their November 4th meeting at 6 o'clock. Brings us to our next items on the agenda, 5 and 6, which we will hear those together as well, being the planned unit development final plan for the Gardens at Chapman Farms, and the final plat for the Gardens at Chapman Farms. And Mr. Mallon is going to present that to us. Take it away.
All right. Thank you. This is the Gardens at Chapman Farms, second plat, lots 55 to 73 in tracks F through I, final plat and PD final plan. The subject property is located the northeast corner of Colburn Road and Southwest Second Street. It is this last kind of remaining chunk of land here to the south of the existing residential. A little bit of history on this. The City Council approved the rezoning and PD concept plan for this property on October 1st, 2018, and the city, or the Planning Commission approved the preliminary plat back in September of 2018 for this development. Property is approximately 8.27 acres in size. Existing zoning is two-family PUD restricted overlay. The lot layout and access, well, the proposed plan calls for 19 two-family lots, that would equal 38 duplex dwelling units, with four common open space tracks located along the southern end to the east, and a detention tract here on the west side, and then another detention tract and landscape buffer tract on the north. All of the streets, one axis is proposed from Southwest Second Street into the drive, or into the development with a cul-de-sac turnaround at the end. All of the proposed duplex units will have a front face onto the public street. All the streets will be public. Stormwater will be handled in tract G. As per the PUD, the development is required to provide a little over 1.4 acres of open space that meet the open space system requirements. Development meets these open space requirements through the dedication of track G, and also an eight-foot hike bike trail along Colburn Road for approximately a total of 1.5 acres in size. There are no other amenities proposed, frankly, due to the small size of the development and the ability to carry those costs over only 19 lots. Proposed building types, again, are duplex standard lots. The proposed architecture includes two building plans with three different building elevations, two single-story elevations, and one two-story elevation. The... and one two-story elevation. They, all of the units propose a single car garage. The exterior materials include lap siding and masonry with asphalt shingles. There is a condition, as a condition of approval, is that every front facade must have some sort of masonry in order to comply with the mix of masonry or mix of materials under the multifamily design standards and that you can't have a building comprised of one single material. And so they can't just be all lap siding, so they got to have a mix of materials on that. So that's why that condition is there. The proposed buildings meet all of the design standards in terms of garage coverage and front porches. And the landscape plan complies in every aspect with the minimum plant unit requirements for buffers and open space and provides a mix of shade tree, ornamental trees, evergreen shrubs, and perennial plantings and grasses. As you can see here, quite extensive landscaping down along Colburn Road where the hike bike trail will be is down in this area. And then also in this track F that runs behind these houses or these duplexes to help kind of provide a buffer between the two neighborhoods. There are no minimum unit sizes required with the two-family zoning, and so that is not an issue with this development. Track H, there'll be a full cul-de-sac built out here. The track H will just be left open for now. There is going to be an access easement granted through that tract to potentially provide access to a future development to the east if and when that should occur. But at this point, the cul-de-sac will be built to help with circulation. Again, those are the building elevations, building footprints. And that is all of these slides that we have for you tonight. Staff recommends approval of the final plan and final plat with the 10 conditions. Staff finds that the request meets all of the criteria outlined in the UDC for both of those types of applications and is happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Mallon?
Chair. I yield to Commissioner-
Commissioner Fairbanks?
Thank you. Is the track H going to be a permanent open space?
It's not determined at this time. So it may not be all of, it may not remain fully open space. If something gets developed to the east, that may get rolled into it as well.
What, is track H included in this proposal or not?
It is, yes. So at least temporarily, it will be open space.
But in the future, it will not be?
It will have a two-family zoning on it. And so I believe that's the case. They may be able, the applicant may be able to provide more insight onto that. But at this time, there's nothing proposed for it to be developed. And if something were to be proposed to be developed on that, it would have to come back before the Planning Commission.
Okay.
And then it would still meet, have to meet open space requirements?
Yeah, yeah, they're meeting their open space requirements through the other open space tracks and the inclusion of the hike bike trail.
Okay. Commissioner Peel?
Yes, Mr. Mallon, I'm assuming that the cul-de-sac is in compliance with all emergency vehicle turnaround?
That is correct, yes.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Any other questions for Mr. Mallon? Would the applicant like to say something, Mr. Sully?
I'll still ask you to state your name and address.
Okay, sure. Tyler Sully with Sully Development, 3730 Northeast Trune Drive, Lee Summit, Missouri. I'll touch real quick on the open space track H over there on the far east side. So there's currently no sewer connectivity. If someone did look to develop that, there's no really sewer connectivity for that area. We did have that conversation with staff, I guess it would be about a year ago, whenever we were coming through for our rezoning. And if and when someone does connect to the east for future development, that tract is, we're using that as open space for our development. So if they wanted to connect there, they would have to meet the open space requirements for their development, knowing that some of that open space would be going, would then be going away. So they would be required to meet the open space for their new development if they did connect back through us. So for this development, for this piece right here, track H is planned to be open space.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Mr. Sully? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on either of the items? Anybody like to make a motion for me?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Billups.
Give Commissioner Banks a break. I would move for approval of the planned unit development final plan, PUDF-09197083 with the 10 staff conditions.
I have a motion from Commissioner Billups.
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Peel. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Billups.
I would also like to move for approval of the final plat PF-09197082 for the gardens at Chapman Farms with 10 staff conditions.
I have a motion from Commissioner Billups.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Peel. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries and we will be sending that to the City Council's November 4 meeting at 6 o'clock. That brings us to other business. Mr. Mallon, do you have other business for us?
We do. We have a couple of things to bring to your attention. The next Planning Commissioners meeting will be held on Tuesday, November 12, due to Monday, November 11 being the Veterans Day holiday. So we will have items for you that evening. So please be aware of that date change. Also, we've been asked at one of the previous City, or Planning Commission meetings about the final results when we bring, you know, Unified Development Code text amendments before the Planning Commission and then the Planning Commission provides their recommendation to City Council. Oftentimes, you don't hear about the final outcomes of those. And so with that said, the City Council met last week to hear the Unified Development Code amendments. And the final results of those were for the tobacconist and payday lending restrictions being proposed. Those were all approved. For the stack of Unified Development Code amendments that we had brought forward in terms of the development processes and development regulations, those were approved as staff proposed with the exception of the drive aisle width that was discussed here at Planning Commission as well. And City Council voted to maintain those drive aisle widths as they currently exist in the code and not change them the way that staff had proposed. So that was that result there. And then, boy, there was one other one.
The inspections.
Oh, the third-party building inspections. Yeah, that passed by City Council. Thank you. A lot to remember. So we'll continually remind ourselves to bring that forward to you when we do Unified Development Code text amendments to provide you kind of the results of what happened at City Council, like asked.
Thank you.
Also, we wanted to bring to your attention some of the meeting dates that we have in December. And particularly because we have a sign code task force that is currently doing quite extensive work on looking at revising the sign code. And our tentative schedule right now would have that trying to get before the City Council in the first part of January. As such, a Planning Commission date would be needed either on December 23 or on December 30. And so we just wanted to bring that to your attention and maybe have a discussion about which evening would be better in terms of being able to have attendance and have a quorum, because I know both of those evenings are right around important holidays. I didn't know if one would work better for others or not. So we just kind of wanted to have that discussion. But given the fact that we have quite an important item, such as the Sign Code Task Force, looking at needing a second, one of the second dates in December, we wanted to see what the preference would be of the commission.
And it won't be ready for us to see it prior to those two dates?
No, it's going to be quite a struggle for us to make those two dates as it is. We still, you know, it'll have to go through the iterations of the Development Advisory Commission, as well as maybe a few other boards if we determine that that needs to happen. And so we're in the process of drafting it right now. It's pretty in a rough stage right now. And so, yeah, I don't see it being in a, unless we hire two or three new planners, give Nathan a break, he's doing the lion's share of the work on it. But, yeah, I think that would probably be the easy, or the earliest we could get it to.
So what's the consensus?
I would suggest the 30th.
I would take-
And I would-
Yes.
I think it's better and it also gives them additional time.
Would that work? Do I need to vote on that, do I, or do I?
I could send a doodle poll out tomorrow. That would probably be a lot easier for them.
Okay. Yeah, we'll send out a poll to all the members, especially to be able to hear from those that weren't able to attend this evening. But, yeah, an extra week wouldn't hurt.
Yeah.
So that is all the other business that we have.
Okay.
Unless there are any questions that staff can answer for any of the Planning Commissioners.
Any questions for staff on anything? Commissioner Fairbanks?
I'm curious of what the Planning Commission can do if they feel strongly, as we all did on this payday on the tobacconist situation. What would you recommend that we do to let the plant, the City Council know the depth of our thoughts on that?
I think it was probably can fade to them through Mr. Fowler, because he sat through our meeting and took that back to council discussion as well.
Yeah, and I watched, I watched that council meeting and yes, he did bring it up, but it was, I mean, like none of the council even discussed it.
I guess you could go and attend and speak up. It's too late now, they've already voted.
Yeah, I know it's too late now, but I mean, if there's a future situation.
I guess future situation would be because it was still held as a public hearing and you could go-
You could go be a person of the public.
And speak at the public hearing.
And speak at the public hearing.
Yeah, because there really wasn't any discussion.
No, there was no discussion.
No discussion on it.
I've watched it too. And I'd recommend all the planning commissioners watch the City Council meetings after we voted on something that we're passionate about, one way or the other.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes, I'd like to also add that early into that week, shortly after the Planning Commission meeting, City Council members were made aware of it. I think some of them probably went back and reviewed the Planning Commission as well. So, in other words, they had some of that input and time to digest that information too. But you're correct, there was not much discussion about it.
Right.
At the meeting.
Well, and I just thought, you know, if it's a situation where, yeah, you can have an input by going and presenting at a public hearing, that doesn't mean that you're going to convince anybody to change their mind. But at least you might feel that you were heard.
That's what the public hearings are for? Yeah.
Chair, I would like to have a comment.
Yes, Commissioner Peel.
Is that our current City Council liaison, that expresses full voice support of the Planning Commission's decisions, which I do appreciate.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate that.
You're welcome. Thanks.
Any other business? Comments, questions? All right. Nothing on downtown?
No, they were busy over the weekend, that's all.
I saw it. There was a lot going on.
A lot going on over the weekend.
Trick or treat was a success.
Good, good. All right. Seeing nothing else, I would entertain-
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned.